Call a meeting to order, please stand, Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening, welcome to May 4th Special Session, Brookings City Council. Ask City Clerk to record attendance.
Council members, when I call your name, would you please respond with present? Hanson?
Present.
Niemeyer?
Present.
Tilton Byrne?
Present.
Wendell?
Present.
Bacon?
Present.
Brink?
Present.
Corbett?
Present. Here we have a quorum. This time entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Still moved.
Second.
We have motion and second. Council, any questions or comments? Please call a roll.
Hanson?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Corbett?
Aye. Agenda is approved. First item is the action on Resolution 20-38, ask City Manager to introduce this topic.
Mayor, City Council members, the current ordinance 20-005 is set to expire this Wednesday, May 6. This legislation originally passed March 23rd and renewed April 14th. The intention of the legislation was to lower the curve or reduce the spread in Brookings community by limiting interactions with many, in many public gathering or high contact businesses. The ordinance regulates bars, restaurants, recreational facilities, gyms, theaters, salons, and other similar type businesses. Ordinance 20-005 is written in a way that allows amendment by resolution. The resolution presented tonight amends the existing ordinance. Resolution allows immediate implementation tomorrow, May 5th. The publication is set for May 6th, but staff believes adequate notice to the public was given through the agenda packet posting as well as communication through social media in the chamber as well. Staff anticipates working with businesses over the remainder of the week on this, on the implementation of this regulation. And if passed, it does not mean businesses do have to open up if they are not comfortable. The reason for this recommendation that's being presented tonight is that the residents of Brookings have done a successful job in keeping the numbers of COVID-19 cases low in our community through social distancing efforts. This action has granted our healthcare professionals time which is necessary to prepare for any surges in the future. Jake, next slide. The proposed resolution allows for incremental reopening, I'm going to back it up one, Jake, sorry. The proposed resolution allows for incremental reopening that protects patrons and employees. The language promotes proper social distancing and good hygiene practices. General regulations throughout and affecting specific areas include continuing limiting groups to 10 and less, 10 or less in spacing of groups, or of individuals six feet apart. Employees shall wear masks of specific businesses and regular disinfecting of high-touch areas and used spaces. Next slide, Jake. Restaurants, bars, theaters, and similar businesses, all employees will wear masks in restaurants and bars. Maximum of 10 customers or 50% occupancy, whichever is greater. An occupancy capacity will be posted on the front of the entry. Cleaning of high-touch areas in restaurant, various materials between users, just an example of tables or chairs in between users at a restaurant. Screening of employees is recommended. No self-service buffets or salad bars. No sharing of condiments or menus unless wiped between use. Within gyms, casinos, and grocery stores, a maximum of 10 customers or 50% occupancy. Occupancy capacity will be posted on the front entry. Installation of Plexiglas where possible between customers and employee at cash registers in the grocery stores. And cleaning of high-touch areas. At gyms, the users and employees will be responsible for cleaning equipment after each use. Next slide, Jake. Salons, barber shops, six feet spacing between customers and recommended that service is provided by appointment only. Employees must wear masks. Clean equipment before and after each customer and adequate social distancing for leading customers is adhered to. Next slide, Jake. Resolution 20-38 amends the existing ordinance and regulates specific businesses. New regulation would be in effect until May 31st or earlier as determined by City Council. Tonight, Council will have the first reading of ordinance 20-007 and the second reading, May 12th, on the incremental reopening ordinance. The resolution has more details specific to businesses and I encourage businesses to review it online. The chamber is assisting in helping businesses navigate through this resolution. Thank you, Kelsey, for all your help there. Businesses that don't know their occupancy can contact the city, or more importantly, we have posted a calculator on our COVID-19 webpage which businesses can go in and calculate their COVID-19 reopening capacity. Staff has also created a frequently asked questions for this ordinance, which is also located on that COVID-19 webpage. F resolution 20-38 is approved in May 12th. Ordinance 20-007 is approved. Council would have up to four options of action to assist in stopping the COVID spread if needed at any point in time in the future. First of all, Council would have the stay-at-home ordinance, which they've already read once and can implement on a second reading. The current ordinance, which regulates public gatherings, would be an option. And the one that we're proposing tonight is incremental reopening, which is 20-007. And finally, in the future, hopefully Council would have an option to repeal everything and allow businesses to operate based on recommended guidelines once we reach that threshold. The transition of these phases would be assessed weekly by staff and acted upon Council when deemed necessary. The triggers and transition for less or more restrictive regulations would be based on testing, number of cases, hospitalization spikes. The guidance is primarily given by medical professionals with insight from our economic partners as well as public input. One thing I wouldn't mention, and I've had a lot of questions on this, this regulation as well as others that we've had previously, does not regulate or govern religious organizations. Tonight, the incremental reopening is presented and approval is recommended for implementation Tuesday, May 5th.
Okay, thank you. Entertain a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this time I'm going to open up the public hearing. And public hearings are important because it's an opportunity for the council to, I know many of you have sent us emails and phone calls, but it's also an opportunity for us to hear from you. I'd ask you that when you come up, please don't touch the mics, they have been sanitized, they are on. And also, just please state your name so that we have that. And once that's done, then I'll close the public hearing and then the council members will have an opportunity to state their thoughts or share any things they have. So, this time the public hearing is now open. You weren't fast enough, he beat you to it.
No, go ahead.
Maybe she'll answer your question for you.
I'm Casey Ingean. I own a small business here in Brookings. My concern is not for my business. We've been able to stay open. But when the, we started having the shutdowns and stuff like that, we kind of made a call to action on our page saying, you know, if you're running short on food, you know, contact us, we'll do what we can to try to hook you up with the right people and see if we can make sure that nobody is hurting during this time. We've seen the food pantry take a big hit. The church that we go to, we're a part of their board as well, and we've been trying to meet needs through the church. They've also taken a big hit, so they're struggling to provide needs to Brookings as well. Today, I've had 10 emails from people, and not necessarily in the, you know, what you'd consider the poverty class. We're seeing from like, middle-class whose people have been laid off for a really long time and not working. So, I guess my question is, if we decide to keep the shutdown going, even though, you know, we don't have any active cases right now, my question to the council members is, what is your plan of action to make sure that people are still being able to put food on the table?
We'll answer that again when it turns back to the council to respond to you, because there might be more than one council member has thoughts on that, so.
Okay?
Thank you very much. Was that it? I'm sorry.
Well, that was my question. I wanted to hear kind of what your, what your thoughts are, how you're going to keep the food on people's table if we don't go forward. Because if you're going to choose to stay shut, then you have to have a plan to make sure that people are still able to provide for their families. And I haven't really seen that. So I guess I would like an answer to, who has a plan to make sure that people are still being able to feed their families?
Keith, I can probably answer some of that.
You want to go ahead?
Yeah. For those people watching and anyone that's interested, I strongly encourage them to contact the area of the United Way. They are working with community foundations to take donations for food insecurities and other non-for-profit programs. I know right now that there's a lot of people dependent upon those services, and it's essential that we get the word out that they are available for the public, or for those agencies, and those agencies are doing a very diligent job. I know we have four different programs here in the community, if not more, through some spinoffs, and so I encourage people to take advantage of that if they do need it.
And we have actually reached out to the United Way and we are working with them.
Good.
But they are actually taking quite a hit too, because so many people are reaching out to them. So I'm just, if this continues, I feel like you're going to see a wider spread
One of the-
problem than what this has shown to be.
One of the things that I mentioned last week that we're going to try, that I'm recommending to council and that we'll talk about next week, is a transition of our outside agencies to the United Way. And then the United Way utilizing that rubric to ensure that the funding is going to those with the greatest need here in the community. So hopefully that could help out with some of these questions that you're bringing up.
All right, thank you for your question.
Thank you.
And thank you for the work you're doing, it's very important. All right, sir, she beat you to it, but well, your gentleman gave it to her, all right, whatever. Yeah.
Good evening, my name is Scott Brayford. I was just, the question is, so as far as rolling forward by passing this resolution, is that going to then require a second reading and approval before business can reopen? Or can businesses start on the 6th? As mentioned earlier, I was just confused, maybe you could help clarify that?
Sure, yeah, the existing ordinance 20-005 allows the opportunity for amendments by resolution. And so what we're doing tonight is making that, or that amendment to that base resolution as a stopgap, so businesses can start implementing these incremental reopening measures starting tomorrow, May 5th.
Oh, excellent.
And then what we'll do is have a second, or the first reading tonight, and then a second reading on Tuesday, next Tuesday, May 12th. And then we'll include any changes the council might have as far as amendments to that legislation.
Okay, good, so that, kind of a good compromise.
It's confusing, I understand, so I appreciate you bringing that forward.
I don't understand the law, so I don't pretend to. Good deal, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else?
Isaiah Cravie, 4305th Street. Thank you very much for everyone being here today. I just had a question in regards to the threshold value that you talked about, as far as bringing us back to that fully reopened. What is the threshold value that City Council would be okay with for us to bring back the entire full-scale reopening? Thank you.
We'll get back to you on that one, I'm writing vigorously. Anyone else here to speak to Resolution 20-038?
Hi, I'm Carla Dieter, and I'm just a resident of Brookings. And so I'm not a small business owner, but I'm very concerned about our economy and the people that are trying to run a small business. And, you know, I just have a comment that the, at first, we knew not much about this virus, and we had to take strong measures to get things, you know, so that we knew what was going on. But right now, we know a lot from around the country and even from our own state. Statewide, and I pulled this off the website today, we've had 22, 45 cases of positives and 14,130 cases that were negative. So, we have, and only 150 people in the state have been hospitalized, in the whole state. And we've had 11 deaths, which are, you know, we would all love to have no deaths, but we've had 11 deaths. And Brookings County has had, as far as I could tell from any website, 13 positive cases. 13. We've had no hospitalizations, no deaths in our whole county, and we've shut everything down. So I'm here to speak for a proportionate response to this virus. And I have a couple of questions, like our previous person, really, what is your goal? Is it zero coronavirus cases? Because right now, we're close to that. We've, is it no, no hospitalizations, is it no deaths? We are already there. And then again, what's your criteria to lift the restrictions in Phase 4? Because it's, you know, our businesses are our lifeblood, and this city is not going to survive closing down. People are, people are without food. And I haven't been affected, I've worked from home the last three years, so this hasn't affected me a whole lot, but there's a lot of people that it has. And so we have to take that into consideration too. We need a measured response. So, and my other question is, I know you've consulted with healthcare providers about how to respond to this. As you're looking at reopening businesses, I hope that you've also talked to businesses about really what is going to be reasonable for them to reopen? Because, you know, restaurants, gyms, hair salons, et cetera, I mean, sometimes they may, I mean, under, under some of the guidelines, they, they may not, they may not be able to make it. So, I'm just, as a concerned citizen here, I'm, I'm saying that let's let our, let's let our businesses mitigate appropriately. I'm just going to, one more thing, and then I'm going to be quiet. Sioux Falls Health Director Jill Franken, just, I pulled this off the web just, just the other day, told counselors in Sioux Falls, "The timing is right to begin easing coronavirus-related restrictions in the city due to new data that shows the area's healthcare systems have capacity to handle the hospitalizations that are expected to come with a surge in COVID-19 cases. I'm very confident in what we will see from our business community." She said of her expectation that business owners will adequately manage their operations while taking into account social distancing practices. And Minnehaha County has had 1,880 cases positive. We've had 13. So let's open. Thanks.
Thank you, Carla.
My name is Shelley Anderson, and I have a few questions and a few comments. First off, I am a small business owner and would like to know with a show of hands, who on the City Council owns or operates a small business? Have you been impacted by this? Were you closed?
Well, I've been on the ground, I've got 20 employees, I don't know, they're in the job, I don't know, I've got 20 jobs, I've got 20 jobs, I've got 20 employees.
I didn't have my mic on, but I was talking to you. I'm requiring my guys to wear a mask. A mask that my daughter made that we can put a filter in, because a lot of the job sites that we're going to are requiring this. We have our temperatures taken on a lot of the commercial projects. We have to go through a questionnaire. Our safety meetings are doubled in size on the three new ones that we started in the last couple of weeks. We've worked in, in South Dakota in a few places, and we've also been working in Nebraska and, and southern South Dakota, close to the border. Yes, it has affected our businesses also. And a lot of it is because of other trades that either can't get their product, or their crews have been depleted to the point where they can't cover everything, or people are staying home and have chosen not to work for fear that they're going to get it on a job site. We've had that in Sioux Falls, just because of the Smithfield thing. Nobody's staying at home. I mean, if, if they're not working, you know, they're, go out if you need to, I guess. I, I'm, I'm on the side of caution. And like I said, I made sure that my guys were protected. I've, I've told all of my guys, if you're sick, don't even come to work, just call in. I had one guy that was tested because he has a granddaughter that came from Sioux Falls that were around some Smithfield employees. He had a sinus issue and they had the test done. He was negative, but he had to take that week off. Yes, it has affected my business, but I've got, I've got to hold the line. I'm trying to, you know, personally, I go into any business with my mask on. If I know I'm going to be within six feet of somebody and I have to talk to them, I put my mask on. It's to protect them. I think everybody should take that responsibility. And I wanted to say that later on, but since you put me on the spot, since I'm a small businessman, I, yes, it has affected me, in more than ways than you can imagine. But none of us asked for this.
Have you expressed that to the rest of these City Council members who don't understand what it's like to own a small business?
You know-
I mean, do you guys understand? You guys haven't been financially impacted.
I think, I think, I can speak for the council a little bit, I think everybody has been educated on this. We knew making the decision of shutting down the businesses that needed to be shut down, we knew that wasn't going to be a, how do you want to say, a popular thing, but this was to protect our citizens. And, and I, the young lady that came up last week, I felt really bad. I did work in her, in her salon, I know she was only open for two weeks. That's tough, I can just imagine. There's, there was a major investment that young lady made, and-
But what about the ones who've been here 40 years, like mine?
I get it, I get it. And it's a decision that we had to make. And, and I realize that this is the only city that the salons, the barber shops, and the spas were shut down in this state. But we have surrounding states-
And they're going other places, to Watertown, to Sioux Falls-
I understand that, ma'am.
-and all those other places.
But there was other states that shut the whole state down.
I agree, I agree.
And I, I realized we're a little more of a freewheeling state here, and I think that sometimes we probably should have been a little more severe, but we weren't. And, and I had concerned citizens that had other salons that were concerned for their customers and didn't know how they were going to be able to, to adjust, and were willing to shut down instead of try to figure out how to protect everyone. The one thing about that is, is it was difficult for me because nobody was here to give you the other side. And then, and I apologize for that, but everybody can jump on me about that because it was my amendment, but everybody voted for it unanimously.
Then I would like someone to define essential versus non-essential, because in my mind, I believe that every business is essential to someone. What you consider essential might not be to me. For instance, liquor store, totally not essential to me. Even the golf course, isn't essential to me either, but apparently it is to the city. Makes me think, hmm. Anyone want to define what essential versus non-essential is? Okay. First off, to your point, I understand why we closed six weeks ago. I get it, because we didn't know, we, it was, it was a fear of the unknown, and we didn't know, and I think it was the proper thing to do. But it is time for the government to give the rights and decisions back to the people. As of today, we have 13 cases, of which we alluded to, with 13 recoveries, no hospital visits according to the Department of Health website. I would ask that you allow the non-essential business to open starting tomorrow. You shut us down within an hour, and I think that you can open us back up just as quickly. Lastly, if you continue to keep what you call non-essential businesses closed beyond today, you're going to create an even greater mental health issue than COVID-19 could have ever impacted our community. Families are suffering, and you have the chance tonight to allow people to start back on their road to whatever their picture of normalcy is going to be going forward. Please allow each person that right.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak to this?
Mr. Mayor, City Counselors, Steve Timmerman. My wife Melanie and I sent some correspondence to you earlier, so hopefully you received that, but in the course of, for discourse here tonight and the benefit of others in the room, I want to share some concerns. As noted by some of the previous speakers, we entered into this with a lot of unknowns. We've never had this virus around specifically, it's actually been around for a long time, but we've never had it at this kind of level in awareness. And so, we did do some things that we felt were, or you did, that you felt were necessary, and as previously noted, that's understood. But we're farther into this now. We have a lot more data, a lot more science, a lot more things to compare it to. Most notably, one of the things I'd encourage you to look at is something we deal with every year, and that's standard influenza. If you look at the statistics, the actual numbers on that, it's far more deadly and far more serious across the board than what we're even seeing now. So, I understand that to do this, the things we've done, the idea was to flatten the curve. There still really isn't any good science that says we're doing that. I think we have been successful at flattening the curve on our economy. And so far, that's the thing that, as brought up tonight, we are seeing. Right now, you're proposing to go from an ordinance that has some restrictions to it, to an ordinance that has, in some cases, more restrictions and things to, as already noted, that are not clear. And one of the other things I want to note before I go into my concerns about the proposed resolution or would become ordinance, is what was already noted. But I want to emphasize too, we are north of an area that has a larger impact than we're seeing. And as of May 1st, the city of Sioux Falls had a first reading on ordinance, excuse me, a proposed ordinance, that is basically bring the economy back open with the only restrictions being social distancing, and not all the things that you're spelling out in your ordinance. So, to the questions and concerns, as far as cleaning, inconsistencies that are things aren't really covered clearly in the ordinance, and are very inconsistent is how businesses are cleaning. For example, going to a lot of the businesses that are already open, the high-touch things are not getting cleaned. So like, most notably, keypads and credit card readers. I do see staff sometimes cleaning the things, other things like conveyor belts and such, but the things that the actual people touch, as customers, are not getting cleaned. As far as wearing a mask, just sitting here for a very short period of time, City Counselors in front of me are wearing your masks appropriately, but I've seen several people who are not. Also seen, just a very short amount of time, the concern that I have with mask use, and that's people don't handle them appropriately. They present a false sense of security. They're not always the appropriate mask. And so we're giving people a way to go out under these ordinance that really isn't effective nor helpful. And the data on the mask not being effective is also out there. As far as the other thing with masks too, when you get into businesses, and it's already actually here tonight, hearing a few you speak with the masks on, it's hard to hear people. If you're requiring people in the business to wear a mask, I have a concern for the people who come into those businesses who may need to see lips in order to, because they have a hearing impairment, and they can't tell what's being said. Or it's a muffled voice, like we're already getting tonight with some who are even using microphones, you're hard to hear. And so that presents a problem. The cleaning of masks, how are they being cleaned and handled? I don't know, there's nothing here on that, how are we going to enforce that? So, just because I see you wearing a mask, I don't know if it's even a clean mask, a proper mask, and again, how you've been handling it, and then handling it with your hands and the touching things. As far as gathering size, that's spelled out pretty well in the ordinance, but if we're opening up restaurants again- As far as gathering size, that's spelled out pretty well in the ordinance, but if we're opening up restaurants again, one of the things that some restaurants have is standing areas. And as we get into the summer months, we have some restaurants that have outside patio areas that are standing areas. I don't know if you've considered that in this or not. Schools and playgrounds are not addressed. One of the things we know about this virus is it lives a matter of minutes out in the sunlight. We have yellow tape around our playgrounds right now. Kids can't go to the parks and play. We're getting into the nice weather, and in this most recent ordinance, I don't see anything addressing what's going to happen with those. Children need to get out and play, and that really is not a high-risk area. Private property, you're restricting gatherings, but it appears, or it's unclear, where those gatherings can happen or not. It would be assumed it's in public areas, but what about private property as the weather gets nice? If there's a homeowner that has a group of 15 people on their property, are they subject to this? Are they going to be pestered by somebody that they're breaking an ordinance? As already noted, churches and places of worship aren't spelled out in this. How are they going to be handled? They were exempted before. We've already had, because of the way churches are operating, when people have died, funerals are not happening as we would normally like to see them. And so now we have families who are bereaved that are not able to mourn in a normal way. The one-way aisles are spelled out in the ordinance. If you go to any place that has one-way aisles, it's not working. And even with people going the same direction, they're still passing each other because people have to stop to get things. So I don't see the purpose in that in this ordinance. A big concern I have is mental health. The previous speaker just mentioned that. I noted in a previous email to the councilors that a year ago, we had the farming crisis with flooding. We opened up mental health crisis lines because we had a lot of people who were frustrated and trying, had financial loss from that. And already, we're seeing a lot of anxiety and mental health issues from this issue. And the financial despair that people are going to be confronting is going to create even higher mental health issues if we don't allow our economy to open back up. And it's unclear to me how this is being enforced, if it is being enforced. It's an ordinance, it's there, but who's going to go around and enforce it? In short, I see a lot of, I see more problems that this creates than it helps. I ask, on behalf of myself, my wife, who I'm speaking for as well, you consider just allowing the current ordinance 20-005 expire and allow it to do what works every other time of the year when we have influenza and other infectious disease? Let the public go out, do what they need to do to protect themselves, stay at home if they're ill. It's an effective strategy that's worked, and I think can continue to work and allow our economy to get back on its feet. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else here to speak to the resolution, opening up businesses tomorrow?
Good evening, council members. Mayor, thank you for having us. J.L. Thorpe. I'm a Brookings County resident and also a local business owner. I appreciate you guys bringing this forward tonight, bringing up the reopening ordinance. I do believe that it is definitely time. I guess my question for you is, for those businesses who have been operating for the last six weeks, and I would say responsibly so in the limited spread, to now be looking at an ordinance that is called a reopening ordinance, but with a litany of restrictions and requirements on those businesses to now try to adapt to, I think is confusing. I'd like to know where the premise is for putting those restrictions in place now and why that was not important to you six weeks ago. My second question, and probably my main question, is I think, as for myself, as a business owner in multiple cities in South Dakota, you guys have had by far the most restrictive and far-reaching ordinance of any city in the state. And so when I see the way that this ordinance reads, and all of these guidelines are listed as mandates in which non-compliance results in a fine, I would really like to hear from you as the council of why you feel it is appropriate and necessary to not issue these as guidelines, recommendations, encouragement to do so, but rather as requirements, as mandates. It's very hard for me to understand why that makes sense when the Sioux Falls ordinance, one of the largest hotspots in the entire nation, is listing their ordinance as guidelines and recommendations. So I guess I just want to hear from you very pointedly, why do you believe it is appropriate for this to be written as a mandate? And what does the enforcement look like for this? Will there be five new code enforcement officers hired? Will there be... I mean, I just, I look at this, and I just feel like this is another opportunity for there to be conflict between customers and employees, between neighbors. I just think it's very confusing how this will be enforced. And so again, what I really would like to just hear from you is why, as a council, you do believe that it is appropriate and frankly constitutional for you to mandate all of these procedures to businesses, which frankly are controversial. There are many opinions amongst the medical community on the efficacy of masks. And so to say to businesses that you will, your employees will wear masks, or you will be fined, I just feel is very inappropriate and frankly opens you up, in my mind, for legal battles down the road. And so I would really just like to hear from you this evening on your thought process on why this is a mandate and even ask you to consider an amendment to follow every other city in the state and make this a recommendation other than a mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Heather, and I'm a resident of Brookings. I read through this ordinance, and I kind of had some of the same questions that some of them just came up with. One of them was the fact that grocery stores, which have, as far as I know, been able to have 100% occupancy up until now, why now are you demanding that they cut back to 50%? Why are you demanding that businesses put arrows down on their floors and force their employees to wear masks? I understand we all want to be safe. We all want everyone to be healthy. But when are you guys going to trust the businesses and the people to make the right decisions for themselves? Businesses don't want their customers getting sick. That, it just would not make sense to me why a business would want their customers to get sick. So I just want you guys to have faith in the business owners and the people themselves of this community and relax some of these restrictions even more than what this ordinance is proposing. Another thing that I noticed, and this is just a question, in the last ordinance, you were requiring that in a single household, that there could not be 10 or more people if they did not live there. Is that, if this goes through, is that still required? That is, because with Memorial Day coming up and everything, and if I have my immediate family over, that's 18 people right there. It is so easy for my family, who, each of my siblings are married and have three kids, to go over that 10-person limit. So needless to say, at this point, my family lives on a farm, so we all just go there instead because we don't have to deal with these regulations. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Nick Schmichael. I'm not here to talk about business because my business is not shut down because of Brookings. I just have a couple of things. You know, I have watched statewide and different things like that with various ways people are handling this. And I guess my questions and stuff are more about preparation. I'd like to know what city council has done to prepare for the second thing. Obviously, we've done a job of trying to flatten the curve, the health, the morality of saving lives. We did that. But the economic cause, there is going to be a second wave of very bad stuff that comes down the line. And I'd like to know, like, what is city council doing to prepare for that? I know we have a city manager and a CFO. That's awesome. I was very much approved of the CFO position when that was created. But like, I just watched Professor Sordos, or Santos, talk to Sioux Falls Rotary. I haven't seen anything like that in the city of Brookings. I'd love to see that. I'd love to hear from people like that. And then, just in terms of this resolution, I personally believe the stay-at-home, like, if this gets passed, the stay-at-home ordinance is a, something that can be utilized until May 31st, correct? Like, if need be? Like, you guys could pull the stay-at-home ordinance and use that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Any one of these ordinances council could implement immediately?
Yeah. I believe the stay-at-home ordinance should be completely removed from this. I think if it gets to that point again, you have another first reading and a second reading. I'd like to see different data. The, during, I think it was a stay-at-home ordinance, the epidemiologist was using data from February 1st in China. I'd like to see current data for our country, for our state. And I just, right now, at this point, I would love to see that removed and have it do a first and second reading if needed, so.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, close the public hearing at this time. Council members, city manager, a lot of questions to answer. Anyone care to dive in?
Well, I guess I will, I will say a few things about this. For me, personal responsibility matters a lot. And I believe in our right to be independent thinkers and to do the things that we choose to do, what's best for our lives, what's best for our families. And what we're trying to do is balance this fear that people have with a very real economic need. And it's really off-putting to me when I hear people say that, "Oh, you're choosing between life and dollars," as if it's that simple. It is not that simple. Those things are mixed together. We're choosing between one kind of human flourishing and another kind of human flourishing when we do these types of things. If I could, I would like to have made this a series of guidelines and a series of suggestions, recommendations, pass the resolution and not go into the ordinance because I do believe that everything you do in life carries a certain amount of risk with it. There's inherent risk in driving a car. There's risk in going anywhere during flu season. There's risk in everything that we do. And now that we know a lot more about coronavirus than we did two months ago, I think that we can start to make different calculations about what level of risk is acceptable. So I had two thoughts going into tonight's meeting. And one of those would be to make an amendment to basically not do the ordinance and simply change Resolution 20-038 into a series of guidelines and recommendations. I'm not sure I have the support to do that. And so I had another thought as well, just to try to help make this easier. Government is about compromise, and we are needing to work together. By doing something here, it's better than leaving everything shut. So while I personally might not like every detail in this plan, and I completely agree with a lot of the points that were raised about how now we're adding new restrictions, but yet dangling the carrot of you get to reopen, that is confusing, and it's a lot of understanding that we all have to do as a group, as a community for, of, hopefully, what's just a few short weeks of time, right? So that's a lot of education and a lot of information to absorb, a lot of new policies and processes for every business to try to adopt and try to incorporate into their, into their day-to-day. And I do think that that is challenging. I also do think that we should trust each other and give trust and get trust. And as individuals, every single one of you has the right to stay home and to not open your business and to not go to places that you think might be dangerous or harmful for yourself, for your family. And I would like to see us be able to to resume those rights. So at this time, I'd like to hear what other council members maybe have to say.
Mayor Corbett?
Yes.
This is Nick, and I just had a couple of comments to share.
Please.
Well, first of all, I want to say thanks to those of you that shared your perspective this evening and to the dozens, probably more than 100, maybe hundreds of those who have sent emails and texts or made phone calls in the past couple of weeks. Thank you. And I think our democracy is only as strong as the participation of our citizenry, and I've really appreciated your engagement in the last couple of weeks. I think it has helped us understand the impact of this virus and of local-level policies and decisions. In March, when we passed Ordinance 20-005, I noted that it was the most difficult decision that I had made as a city councillor. And to be honest, tonight's decision will be more difficult. As a community and as a state, we have reached none of the thresholds the Centers for Disease Control defined as indicators of whether or not our city should begin a phased approach to normalcy. We don't have a sustained decrease in number of confirmed cases in our state or in surrounding counties. We don't have a sustained decrease in death or infection rates. We don't have a plan to implement widespread testing and tracing. In fact, as of this morning, only 1% of the population of Brookings County has been tested. On the other hand, I recognize, and I think we all recognize, the very real economic devastation being created by this virus. Its impact on our economy is going to be felt for years. And as local officials, we do have to find a way to balance the health of our friends and our neighbors with their livelihoods. I feel the need to just speak on one other element of this situation and the policies that we pass and the decisions that we make. So while we have continued to hear national and state-level and now local leaders voice the need for individuals to make personal decisions to protect their health and the health of their families, the reality is it is much more complicated. If you're an employee and your employer chooses to reopen this week, you will very likely be expected to return to work, whether you feel safe doing so or not. And if you choose not to return to work, you will very likely be ineligible for unemployment insurance. Hundreds of families in our community will be facing these very real decisions very soon. And part of the reason I believe that the mandates that are written into this resolution are important not only to protect citizens and shoppers that make a choice to go into a business, but to protect our workforce. And ultimately, I'll support the passage of Resolution 20-038 this evening. But beyond tonight, I'll continue to look to experts in public health and medicine and epidemiology to guide our next steps. There are a number of thresholds out there, and we do learn more every day. And I'll be looking to experts in the medical field rather than politicians and pundits to guide what we do as a community from here. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Wendell. Any other council members?
I'll go.
Councilman Niemeyer?
Okay, so, yes, this virus has affected my business very much, so. And yes, I made the amelioration to amend to include salons, barber shops, and spas, and I was inclined to do this in the afternoon as I had discussed it with the two other council members. It was about 1, 2 o'clock in the afternoon. I was due for a haircut, and I chose not to because I felt it would be unfair, kind of like insider trading. So I have long locks like everybody else does, just so you know. Otherwise, I would have been over at Bob's getting my hair cut at Razor's Edge before the meeting that last time when I did the motion to amend. But I think for the next month, we need to go with what we have before us tonight in a resolution just to ease back in, make sure that we don't have a turn for the worse. And I know not everybody agrees, but I can't count emails. I'm not going to try and put numbers together, but we have had a lot of emails concerned asking us just to stay the task the way we are now. I don't feel that we need to do that anymore, but I do want us to start reopening. And if we have to do it with some suggestions, some mandates, it's better than what we have now. And yes, it's frustrating to go to Hy-Vee and go down an aisle if somebody's going the wrong direction or you can't wait long enough to, to, for the person in front of you to move on. But, um, we're going to have a new normal here. It's not going to be the same for a while. I don't know what it's going to be like. And so, um, and I'm not doing this out of fear. I'm doing this out of what we get for facts from our health officials. The doctor I talked to, um, about another subject, I asked him, I said, had, and what he has experienced. And he said, "He thinks he's had at least 20 patients that didn't get tested, that stayed at home and got through the virus." "We don't know how many people are in our, in our city right now that have never been tested, that have either had it or might have it now." "We don't know that. Nobody does. I'm not here to, to be an authority on that either." Like I said, not everyone in the city wants us to, to open up. And if they want us to stay the course, I think that we, we have tonight meets at least in the middle to protect our vulnerable citizens, to give some citizens in this city some reassurance that we'll try to do our best to protect everyone. So, that's kind of where I'm at. I, 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 I don't, I don't like some of the things that we put on here, but on the flip side of it, we need to make sure that all of our citizens are protected and it's going to be a hassle. I don't like wearing this mask anymore than anybody else does. I have hearing aids and glasses. And every time I take this thing off, it jerks everything out of my face. So, but it's what I have to do to be responsible, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilman Niemeyer. Other council members?
Mayor Corbett?
Yes.
This is Dan.
This is Patty.
This is Patty.
Are we, are two of us trying to talk at once?
Yes.
Are two of us trying to talk at once?
Yeah.
Okay, Flip, which one of you wants to speak?
Is it better now?
Yes, I assume.
I can't hear you. I, first of all, want to thank all of the businesses and the members of our community who have really stepped up during this past six weeks. This is something that none of us, we all hate COVID. And I, I don't think anybody, uh, in my lifetime ever expected to deal with anything like this. Um, but I've been amazed and impressed with the creativity and the thoughtfulness that the business community has already put into this. And many of them are already practicing, um, the kinds of things that we are, uh, putting into the resolution and ordinance. I, I think that we're all frustrated on the testing issue. Uh, I think it was Nick that mentioned there are people, the, the testing is so low in our community. We have no idea what the true numbers are for our community. But as I understand it, that's out of our hands. That's all, um, dictated by the state. Uh, and the only people that can get tested is if, if they go to a doctor and the doctor, uh, indicates that, um, they, they may be at risk and can therefore take the test. And I know I've heard from a number of, uh, citizens who would really like us to be able to, um, increase, uh, the amount of testing. And then I think we would all be more comfortable knowing what level we're truly at where we don't now. But thanks to the, the work that our, that our businesses and our citizens have done, uh, we have, uh, one of the lowest rates in the state and we have been commended. Our community has been commended by the medical professionals, um, because of, of the work that, that the citizens and businesses have done. None of us want to do this. None of us wanted to pass, uh, 005. But we, we've reviewed things and feel that this is the most responsible way to move forward. I know it isn't fun, but we want to get businesses opened again and, um, give them the opportunity. No one has to open. We had some businesses reach out and really indicate that they aren't comfortable yet. And we want to let them know that that's okay. If you aren't comfortable, then you don't have to reopen. Um, there were some businesses that reached out and wanted more notice so that they could take the time to, um, uh, let their, uh, am I still there?
You're still there.
Okay, I had a call come in, sorry. Um, let their clients know and, and be able to schedule them. And so that's my message to them is that they don't have to open tomorrow. They could, uh, whether it's set at next Monday or whatever date they're more comfortable with, and they could start contacting our clients so that they could begin to set up those appointments and do it in the, the most, um, reasonable way that works for them to move forward. So, once again, I know this is difficult. None of us want to do this. And I hope you all understand that there is not a council member that hasn't taken this very, very seriously, that hasn't put considerable thought into this. And it's not something we take any joy out of doing. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Councilman Hanson?
Thanks, Mayor Corbett. I'm going to try to keep this short, uh, and not to use my, uh, professorial, uh, tendency to, uh, to ramble and pontificate. But, uh, I want to maybe echo a couple of the comments that have already been made by, uh, by some of the councillors and, and maybe just, uh, point the direction, or point the conversation a little bit different direction as well. A number of people are, some of the people that have spoke tonight, uh, mentioned other communities, how other communities are, are allowing, uh, their resolution or their ordinance or whatever was in place to expire, essentially tearing the Band-Aid off. They're allowing, uh, their community to go from, from restriction to, to no restriction. And if they have any, uh, potentially just asking them to, to follow social distance guidelines. I like to think that, uh, as a city, uh, historically, we've done a, a pretty good job of, of thinking for ourselves, for doing what's best for Brookings, uh, not doing what, what's best for Brookings based on what Sioux Falls is doing or what Flanger is doing or what Watertown or Aberdeen are doing, but, but what, what will really make us the best community. And, uh, there are other communities in South Dakota that have similar, uh, ordinances and, and resolutions to what we're discussing tonight. Rapid City is a, a perfect example. If, if I'm not mistaken, they, uh, they have almost the exact same, uh, resolution as, as we're, we're discussing right here. I think it's, it's important for everyone to recognize that while the, the people who make comments here tonight were, were mostly against, uh, the resolution, uh, as Patty said, as Op said, we've, we've received, uh, a number of communications from business owners asking us not to pass this resolution, to extend the current ordinance. We've had many community members, um, what's the percentage? Uh, I don't know. There's probably, uh, you know, more who have, have said, uh, uh, you know, let it expire. But you don't know is that because, um, you know, they're more vocal on the fact that they want things to change versus the people who are okay with, with, uh, ultimately what's currently in place. And so there are a lot of unknowns, even to this day, uh, much like, uh, Open and others have mentioned with regard to, to testing and, and some of those types of things. I 100% agree with, um, the mental health con, uh, comments that were made. Uh, I think that's something that we as a community will have to continue to, to look at. Somebody mentioned the, uh, the, uh, counseling service that was set up uh, with regard to, uh, what happened with the agricultural community. I, I, I sincerely hope that things done like that through extension can, uh, continue, uh, to maybe shift uh, towards COVID-19 as, as we move forward with regard to, to mental health and some of the economic, uh, fallout that, that's going to happen. Uh, I have likewise appreciated the emails, the comments, the phone conversations, uh, that, that I've had the opportunity to have. One of the things that's disappointed me throughout this process is I feel like as a community, we're moving further apart. Uh, when you do go to the store to, to get groceries, uh, people are much less likely to say hi to each other or ask people how their day's going, uh, interact with each other even in a social, uh, distance environment in a, in a safe way. And I think that's what disappoints me the most is, uh, there is, uh, so much anxiety and, and anger and frustration, uh, not only in our community but in the world right now, that, uh, we can't be civil, uh, with each other. That, uh, the beauty of discourse and, and the beauty of, uh, having, having conversations and, and helping each other out is, is really lacking. And, and that's what we're going to need more than any, we, anything as, as we move forward. Uh, it isn't more resolutions or more ordinances or anything else, but it's the, the ability to, to lift each other up, uh, when, when times are tough. Uh, you know, I'm disappointed in the number of, uh, comments and emails, uh, that I've heard that, uh, city councils shouldn't be making a decision because maybe they're still receiving a paycheck or, or their, uh, business or, or their way of living maybe hasn't been affected as much as somebody else's. And, and, and it pains me to, to hear that because I think it, it lacks the sight and the reason to realize that all of us are affected. Maybe if, if I directly am not affected, uh, because I still have a paycheck, it doesn't mean that my brother isn't or my wife isn't or, uh, my children aren't or my, my parents aren't. And, and so, uh, I always just caution people to, to think that somebody has it better or that somebody has a different point of view that means that, uh, them unable to make a decision. And, and again, I just ask that, that you, uh, continue to, um, inform us, continue to share your comments. But at the end of the day, we often have to make decisions that then aren't always popular, that aren't always going to be, uh, unanimous in, in their, uh, in their approval. But we have to do what's best for Brookings. And right now, I think, uh, each of us hopefully vote that way, uh, not because of peer pressure, not because of threats, not because of crude comments or, or because, uh, of something they saw on, uh, national news or something that, uh, they read, uh, in a, in a state newspaper, but because it's truly what's best for Brookings. And, and that's what, uh, I plan to do tonight.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor Corbett, this is Holly.
Okay.
And I will try to keep my comments pretty brief, uh, because I think a lot of, um, what I hope to say has already been said by other council members. But first and foremost, I do, um, want to thank the community, um, community members that are both in the room and those who have called, emailed, sent messages and texts. We really rely on that kind of feedback, uh, in order to make these very difficult decisions. And I think as, um, Councilmember Wendell had pointed out, this is one of the most difficult decisions we will probably ever be faced with, are, are these decisions around, um, this pandemic. A- as it was previously mentioned, we do still have limits on testing. And I think for me, um, this is one of the reasons why, um, I continue to be incredibly cautious around, um, how we move forward and, and really, um, take every comment and every piece of data and all of the professional guidance that we receive very seriously. Because we do know that there are limits on our testing. And, uh, I really hope that at some point in the near future, we will see more testing in our community. But at this point, um, as, as recent as, um, Friday, I heard, uh, from folks in our medical community that, that they are still being hel- held to very specific limitations onto even who they are allowed to administer a test to. And so that does give me a bit of pause when we start to talk about reopening, um, business. The guidance that we have been receiving and we will continue to receive, uh, does come from medical experts, epidemiologists. We hear, um, from our business community, um, from business owners, um, and from concerned citizens and those who are, um, in the more vulnerable populations. And for me, um, I really take all of those aspects into consideration when, um, choosing how to vote on these issues. I do think, for me, the main priority is to protect the health and well-being of our community while also opening up our business, uh, to operate in a safe manner. Um, and so I hope that that is what we are able to accomplish here. I, I do want to, uh, reiterate that council does and will continue to regularly hear updated data from local experts. And for me, really, the, the most recent info, um, that we heard from those experts is what, uh, solidified for me that the ordinance, uh, the resolution we're considering here, um, really is the next best step forward. And like I had already stated, we will continue to, um, watch our local numbers and watch the current circumstances around what's happening locally to make the best decision, um, for Brookings. And, and again, these decisions aren't easy, um, but, uh, I can only pass my vote in a way that I feel is, uh, most appropriate for our local situation, um, and, and help protect our citizens.
Okay, thank you, Holly. I see they've touched about everything, except to me, first off, you know, comments have been made about, well, Brookings' numbers are low. And that's true. And a lot of that I attribute to those of you sitting in the room, the people in Brookings. They've watched that social distancing. They've worn their masks. Now is not the time to let up. I don't want to see our numbers go up. And one of the mayors, and the mayors talk quite often, um, what's working for you, what's not working? And one of the other mayors made the comment that, "Well, Brookings, you were quick to, you know, if you will, get out of the starting gate with 20-005." And he said, "I wished we would have." And looking at their numbers, um, you can probably figure out what town it was. They didn't have that in place. Were we too quick? I don't know. But at 13 people right now, it's not great. I wish it was zero. But 13's better than what it could be. And so the bottom line is we're going to continue to talk about this. And, uh, the other mayors have assured me that, um, as Councilman Hanson said, our resolution, our ordinance, they're same as Rapid Cities. They were a week ahead of us. Last week, they were at this point. And talking to Mayor Allender today, they're still feeling some of the pains, but their numbers have stayed low. And so that's why we're doing it. I don't think any of us did this, as all the council members said, because we wanted to be mean or anything like that. A lot of great comments were made tonight. And again, I can only speak for myself. I'm only one person. I rely on the medical community again and feedback from other people. A lot of great comments. So I challenge you, let's not just stop tonight. If you have something, like Casey said, about feeding people, we need to keep moving on that. That's something we need to keep moving forward and keep challenging the council on this and everybody's comments. So this is our town. And seriously, we're going to, uh, keep moving forward. And I hope the day comes very soon that we don't have any of these and we can get back to normal, whatever normal is. So with that said...
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, please.
May I add one more thing? I want to make sure that we get back to some of the questions that were asked, um, from, from individuals. And so you're, talk about enforcement. And, um, I also wondered if we could talk a little bit for the benefit of the public about what this might mean for, um, spring sports teams and those facilities and all of that type of thing. And then, you know, the, the other point I would make about, um, point three in both the resolution and the ordinance is that it says, "You shall follow CDC guidelines." And I would just, again, point out that those are, it's a huge website with so much information on it. It might be helpful if we could clarify what we mean by that in terms of how we might enforce this.
Sure. So I'll, I'll try to answer as many questions as I can here. You know, when we consider the changes to this resolution based on what the prior legislation we looked at, we have to balance the economics and the public health of this community and try to put something together that works best for both. And, and that's where this incremental approach comes from. We've also learned quite a bit over the last six mon, six weeks. And that's why you see some changes here specifically with regards to grocery stores and other, other businesses. The, one individual brought up a question on essential versus non- Sure. Volume's good? Okay. Sure. One of the questions that we had tonight was essential versus non-essential. And I just want to make it clear that tonight, the, the question at hand is the resolution on the reopening. There is no closure of essential or non-essential businesses. But that list can be found on the federal government's website. We did also list a number of businesses within the original stay-at-home ordinance. Once again, that's not being considered. Uh, what's being considered tonight is whether or not to open incrementally. Someone also asked the threshold that was utilized. Council noted, uh, the various health professionals that, that the council listens to. But they also note the testing, case numbers, spikes, and hospitalization are other factors that they'll be considering as they provide us recommendation moving forward. Another question was asked whether or not we speak to businesses. I know council has heard from a number of businesses throughout the community, but we also rely heavily on our partners from Economic Development, the CBB in the chamber as well, who's helping to communicate some of this information to the businesses to navigate through it. Um, one of the questions was on enforcement. Uh, this is going to be a, a difficult thing to enforce. I was telling council members earlier, it's much like fireworks, right? We have regulations on fireworks. You see them. By the timer respond, unless someone's- unless someone's holding a punk, it's very difficult to, to write someone up. But still, it's a regulation that we enforce. And we, we plan to try to enforce this regulation as much as possible. I think trying to work with businesses is essential. And that's why over the course of this next week, staff's gonna be busy doing whatever we can to help businesses be successful and implement a lot of these, uh, recommended changes and, and within this resolution. Uh, the question was about playground equipment and sports and activities. Right now, the National Parks Association is guiding, uh, parks departments across the state and nation to continue to keep playgrounds closed for the time being. I know our Parks Director meets with park directors from across the state to make sure that we're consistent with what other towns are doing. Now, what you're hearing is that other towns are starting to consider or are opening up playground equipment. So we'll strongly consider that as council moves forward with their resolutions, with their ordinances. At the same time, based on, uh, the good information that we're receiving from those associations, we'll make those decisions. When it comes to summer activities, recreational programs, we are considering some of those to be implemented either, um, early June, uh, to late June, depending on how, how this evolves. We plan on contacting various associations, the baseball, softball, fast pitch, wha- what have you, and working with them throughout these guidelines to ensure that they can, if they can at all, implement a program that meets these guidelines. And I know a lot of towns across the state are doing the same thing. And what you'll probably see is those guidelines evolve, just as you've seen this law and this legislation evolve over time. Once again, trying to work with people as much as possible, trying to put in place some normalcy, if you will, uh, wherever possible. Last question was on CDC guidelines. And, uh, Councilmember Brink is exactly right. That is very broad and it is changing, uh, almost daily. Our intent primarily for that was based on the group of ten or, uh, in six feet distancing as well. Um, there are some other guidelines there, and I'm sure our city attorney, if he was here, he could comment further on that. Um, but primarily that, that was the intention. Um, but also if things should change, we could go back and, and revisit this resolution as well. Um, for the most part, I believe, uh, th- those were most of the questions that I recall that had not been answered.
Council, any other questions, comments? Please call a roll.
Niemeyer.
Aye.
Tiltonburn.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Corbett.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Resolution twenty dash zero three eight is approved. And so we'll start seeing businesses pop back up again. Great news. Okay, so at this time then, we'll have, um, first reading and introduction of ordinance twenty dash zero zero seven. City manager introduced this topic, please.
Mayor, city council members, this is the same exact language as the resolution put into place in an ordinance form. Tonight will be the first reading. Uh, the second reading would be held next Tuesday, uh, May twelfth, for the second reading, once, uh, recorded, then it would be implemented. Once again, the current resolution that was just passed tonight is a stopgap until the ordinance is finalized next week.
Okay, thank you. This time, open up any public comment anyone has again. Please, um, please come up to the mic and hear how hard it is to hear people. So...
Let's get Scott Bremer. But my question, if, if you could again, I just still don't understand the timeline. If you might be able to go through that again.
Okay, go ahead.
Sure. So tonight, the council passed a resolution which amends the current ordinance twenty dash zero zero five. That ordinance allow, is amendable by a resolution. So that puts us in place a stopgap to implement this reopening measures immediately, starting tomorrow. Um, the council will then consider the first reading tonight, and an ordinance requires two readings. Um, the second reading will be held next Tuesday. Once that reading is held, it has the same exact language as the resolution, and that ordinance will then be considered passed at that time. But for now, all the, the, uh, open, the, the incremental reopening language that was put in the resolution, resolution will go into effect tomorrow. Yes.
Okay, anyone, anyone care to speak to first reading? That's something we've changed, so people can speak to the first reading. Past was always the second, but the race is on. Please state your name and...
Carrie Papka. So is, so am I being clear? Are we able to open our salon up tomorrow morning then?
That's correct.
Okay.
Op will be in there. He needs a haircut. Oh, sorry, he said he's...
I just have a quick question. You said you had talked to epidemiologists, um, and people in the medical profession. Have you talked to any of the economists, anybody that would see the, you know, the widespread economy devastation that just not opening up and letting people make their own choices? Have you talked to anybody in that regard?
We do rely for economics, uh, our partner agencies from the Chamber, CBB and Economic Development Coalition. They'd have in return, um, when we started these conversations, when this is initially started, and we talk weekly. And, uh, the, the Chamber, for example, started a series of forums that they have weekly. They also have a questionnaire that they have weekly. They give us all that information. Economic Development also hired a company called Buxton, which utilizes generally credit cards, but now they have a new service where they analyze cellphone data. And that information is given to the council as well. We've also engaged the state to request for more information quicker on sales tax, the things that are going on within our community. State's a little bit slower at, at reacting, but once again, we do rely heavily on those economic development partners to give us that information on the pulse of our local community.
Thank you.
Mayor Corbett?
Yes.
Uh, this is Patty. And yes, um, to let you know that the actual, many local businesses were on the, the town hall-like, uh, calls that the Chamber sponsored, and I want to thank Kelsey, I think she's left. But, uh, so we did hear directly from many small businesses in Brookings and how they were affected, that, um, how I learned about a lot of the creativity that, uh, was being implemented by local businesses. So we have heard from and listened to those as well.
Thank you, Patty. Okay. Okay.
Um, as far as the stipulation of the fifty percent capacity versus the group of ten, what, how, how is that? Or what, how does that implement?
So i- if you're in a business, say, um, local restaurant downtown, and they have enough space for two groups of ten, for, for example, they could operate as such as long as they're six feet apart. Is that your question, or is it the fifty percent or ten, whatever's greater?
Yes, okay. So it could still be fifty percent.
Yes.
As long as they're separated.
Yeah, and, and the other language, we also put in there, or fifty percent, whatever's greater. So if I have a, a small business and say I only have eighteen, uh, capacity, a very small business, um, rather than they only having nine as, as their capacity, it would be ten.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Steve?
My name's Jesse Lee, uh, nine seventeen Sixth Avenue. Uh, apologize for what I'm wearing. I just felt like I had come here. Um, so I want to thank the council, first of all, for all your work on this. Uh, I don't think that's been communicated enough, uh, especially to you, Paul. I think you've done a great job of leading us through this. Um, I own a business in town, so my employees look to me as a leader, so I can relate to that. Uh, the one thing that I do want to say, and the reason I came is, uh, everybody was talking earlier about mental health, financial stability, uh, you know, all these problems that were a result of this. And I just want to remind everybody that those are in a normal role too. So if we're gonna use that as the basis for reopening businesses when they are open, just don't forget about that.
Thank you, Jesse. Get a run, Steve.
Steve Timmerman, thank you for the opportunity to readdress. Um, again, my point about masks, oh, now you made my point for the third time. I was gonna say, in the time since I was up here previously until now, you've touched your mask two times. Now it's three. So, you know, I understand the care and concern that all of you are trying to convey and doing the right thing for our neighbor. But I hate to pick on you, Mr. Mayor, but you've done three times my exact point. These measures are not working as we intend because they're not easily followed. So I think we're fooling ourselves, thinking that putting divisive, unclear stipulations in place, no matter how you word them, is not being helpful. Um, Councilor Hanson pointed out the divisiveness that's in the community because of this. And that's, is what's happening, and I think what will continue to happen. You haven't really put forward clear benchmarks. Well, the councillors mentioned they're trying to work with the benchmarks that are out there, but there are not clear benchmarks really that are being put forth because this is not clear to anyone in the medical community or otherwise. So I don't think that's a good thing to work with because this virus isn't going away. Like I mentioned, influenza's what we know and what we've worked with, it's always around. Even though we have peaks, it's always around. We're gonna keep testing positive people until next year at this time. So we need to move forward in a way that makes sense. And the way that makes sense is what I explained that we've used before with influenza. Governor Noem has said, "The people have done a good job." We have educated the people. We have learned things in the short weeks that this has been out here. And she has given the guidance of moving forward by putting this in the power of the people. Let them make informed decisions. We have information out there. And if the city, as being concerned about our people in the community, would like to put forth recommendations on how we should operate, I think that is laudable. You show your concern for the, the citizens. You show the direction we should be moving forward and the guidelines by which we should move. But to mandate and dictate how this is going to be done is going to continue to create confusion and poor practices and not help anyone out. So let the people decide. Give them direction. Help them out. But don't back them in a corner or create things that are hard to enforce. So you, you've all demonstrated that by what you said tonight. You want to do the right thing. Please do that. Help the people out. Don't hinder them. So that would be my recommendation. I guess my last point I wrote down, just to check, is, you know, you mentioned we tried to be ahead of other people and we don't want to compare to other cities, but yet there was a lot of comparison to what other cities are doing too. So I'm not sure where that comparison lies. And in the information I've, and I didn't belabor that a lot tonight, in the information I've sent to you in emails, we've tried to give you facts. And there are facts out there contrary to some of what is indicated in what you're proposing. So please look at those as well. But overall, I exhort you, please in, inform the people, help them do the right thing, but don't dictate to them what they have to do.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, I don't see anyone else. Council members, you have any comments on the first reading at ordinance twenty dash double oh seven? Seeing none, the second reading and possible council action will be on next Tuesday, May twelfth, twenty twenty. What? Yeah, well, we'll go with May. I corrected my copy, but anyway. Good proofreading, although. So anyway, okay, council members, anything you have in your mind for future discussions, topics? Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Dan.
Has left.
Nick.
Has left.